Hey.
Hey, Craig.
Very soon.
I wish you could give it to me right now. I'll give it to you now.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session. Apologize, we are two minutes late. Tonight. Hello? Am I good now? I don't like to listen to myself. Tonight, we have our, on our study session, we've got the, the Destination Marketing Organization, annual work or the program, plan for the Chamber and the DMO, so I'm gonna hand it off to you, Larry. You want to introduce, or did I introduce it?
You can go ahead, Mayor.
All right, so Renee Luzon Ben, who is our CEO, President of the Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Lou, here is the Director for the Destination Marketing Organization. So I'll hand the floor off to you all.
Thank you, sir. Can you all hear me? Yeah, awesome. Well, I'm gonna start because Lou joined us six weeks ago, and there's been a lot of work done before he arrived, and there's a lot of work that's been done in the last six weeks, and Lou can tell you about all the things he's got in, in motion. I'm Renee Luzon Ben, I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber. Mayor, I always appreciate how you say my name right. Thank you. And I'm gonna flip glasses on and off, because I can see that, but up here, this is just not okay. So what I'm gonna do first is just kind of give you a little, let's step back in time. We've been working on this since, gosh, the mayor presented it at his Biz Outlook Luncheon, the Chamber's Biz Outlook Luncheon, in May of 2019, as a CMO, not a DMO, and I was, I had signed an agreement, but I was not an employee of the Chamber yet. And I was like, huh, this is interesting. And it has been something that we have worked on since then, many presentations to hoteliers to gain their support for the expansion tax, of the bed tax that went into effect this past January, as well as presentations to City Council to support that as well. And so I'm excited to be here to tell you where we are now. Some things that we were able to get done is this past January of '22, and February, several representatives, the PIO from the city at that time, Latonya, the Board Chair of the Chamber, Brian Gardiner, and myself participated in a cohort with a Coraggio Group and other chambers across the state to put together our strategic plan for the tourism, the Destination Services Plan for the Tourism Office. And I'm gonna use that phrase a lot, because DMO is a technical phrase. It's kind of like when I worked in healthcare, we try to avoid using acronyms around people who don't work in healthcare. DMO is, is a phrase that is used a lot in tourism and is certainly a necessary phrase for the Arizona Department of Revenue for the agreement. However, to the general public, a tourism office is something they understand. So the Tourism Office, we developed a plan and worked on some things. However, the actual agreement with the city occurred in September of 2022, signed on the 17th and countersigned out over about that week, and moving forward to a payment of a budget and at the very end of December of 2022. But what's really neat is we had this first whole section area focus to build the organizational and governance structure. We have established a regular advisory board, and that is represented by Mayor Craig McFarland, Matt Herman, who represents the Chamber's Board to the Advisory Board, Ash Patel, who is Southwest Hospitality Management, is building a hotel on the other side of I-10. We're just waiting to do a groundbreaking someday soon. Now Heather Kennedy from the PIO Office, Holly Ricosi with Main Street, Mindy Peeper from, she was, we actually added her as a community representative, a resident. That was her initial joining, but she's also transitioned from one office in the Recreation Department to the PIO Office, so it's a win. And Taylor Nakakihara, who is with Sun Communities, Palm Creek, and some other 55-plus communities here in Casa Grande. We did have Eddie Rezga from Texas Roadhouse, but there's been a change in management there, so we're looking to backfill with another restaurateur. So we've been meeting regularly, and all of the rest of the meetings are scheduled out for the rest of this year. We meet tomorrow at nine. We're gonna give them an update on tonight. Some other things we were able to do, we had rewritten the Chamber's bylaws at the, during 2021, and adopted those. However, I do now have, from Sedona, and we're similar in our model, our organizational structure, a chamber running the DMO, or Tourism Office, as a department of itself. So we have Sedonas that we can look at and, and glean from that, what is the best fit for this community in this chamber, and we will be presenting those in the very near murky future. Some other things I wanted to talk about before I hand it over to Lou, because the next slide, and moving on from that, it's all Lou. No, 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 not yet. No. Not yet. I wanted to talk about, as part of our agreement, we have some items that are considered our scope of service. The first would be our Advisory Board. That is developed, and we will man, meet regularly, and we will have minutes and keep up with all of those things. An annual work session, is that tonight?
That's tonight.
So this is our annual work session, and so this is presenting to you all about what we're doing. And we will get with you probably once a year. I think next year, we'll definitely do it before July, though.
In April.
April? Our Destination Services Plan, which Lou will talk to in just a moment. Our Destination Marketing, and there are a lot of things that, even though we did not have a director, and that, you can see, that was item three of the initiatives, was to hire a manager or director. And I can tell you, in June, I was very happy to check that off the list of things to accomplish. We were fortunate last year to have applied for two grants, and from those grants, we were able to participate in many publications throughout Arizona, and two that we will be participating in, and those were sent around for you to look at. There's tabs in the ones that were in, and the ones that don't have any little Post-it notes on it, they're yet to be published with our ad in, because of their timing. But of those, we are participating in the official State Travel Guide that will come out later this year. The Phoenix Travel Guide, that comes out in September. Just to say, the, the one in Arizona goes to every visitor center. It's put out by the Arizona Office of Tourism. There are over, there are 400,000 issues printed. See, you have a copy up there. 400,000. And they go, we have a stack of them, a box in our office, just like every other visitor in this center in the state, and we will have a half-page ad there. So if any of you see the ad that looks like the Neon Sign Park, that's what's going in that one, as well as Phoenix. And we'll have some more slides to show you. Also, the Arizona State RV Travel Guide, there's 100,000 of those, and those are distributed through visitor centers, as well as RV parks. And through the Chamber, we've made sure one of our local RV repair and service and sales places providers has them as well. The Tucson Official Travel Guide, and lastly, Arizona Drive Guide, which comes out quarterly with 124,000 publications per quarter, and those are distributed at places where you rent a car. You rent your car, you get your travel guide, and that helps influence, maybe not the trip you're on today, but the trip you'll be on next time. So, and then our other scope of services is visitor services. So this is an interesting part. We've been the visitor center for years, but, you know, with more visitors and drawing more people here, we hope down the road that we, that we need volunteers every single day of, all year long. This year, not so much, in the summer, but in the wintertime, it'll be nice to have all of our visitors coming back. So when we report on things we're doing, even though we report our visitor activity also in our quarterly report to the city, because everyone in the office contributes to what happens in our lobby, and that's our visitor center, you'll see those here, too. And then what I handed out, Larry and I discussed performance metrics. And so there's a spreadsheet that went out, and we narrowed down to, of all the taxes collected, these are the ones we're gonna watch and see what's going on with them. For instance, this amusement, what's up with all those red numbers? And what's influencing that? So we're, we're going to learn that. The retail is mostly good, except for March, April, May of this year is not pretty. It went down. Hotels, the increase in bed tax, all of those things we're gonna track and report on. And I think that takes me on to the next slide, which is all you. Take it away, Lou.
Hey, everyone. So the, this slide, you are looking at the timeline of all the strategic planning initiatives. So if you can shift your area of focus to the activate and implement existing destination brand, and the Board and I, we all come to the mutual conclusion that the first priority would be build the stand-alone DMO website. And the good news is, we are on track of that. I already have nailed, so narrowed down, all the details goes into the DMO website. And we will have our first 1.0 website up by the middle of September. The reason I believe we should have the DMO website up, that's the fundamental that we, we can have to move on with anything else. You know, with marketing purpose and management purpose. Rest of the initiative that relates to that focus was develop media strategy and channels to enhance destination reputation. Again, that is kind of like add-on bonus that attached to the DMO website, if that makes sense. So if you're looking at like a social media platforms, so that will be kind of the major marketing channel we are looking at. And we already have created the social media accounts relate to the DMO website. So just in case we don't get that stolen away by someone else. That will be also get published around a similar timeline with the DMO website, which is gonna be September 15th period of time, so the middle of September. And as far as the contents goes into the DMO website, Brian from Blossom Digital already have me pre-filled a questionnaire so to decide the, what contents should goes on that. And our reference is build a pump based on the current Casa Grande Visitor Guide. So that's where we're gonna start, and then we're gonna modify and improve from that. Any questions regarding to the initiative about the DMO website? Okay.
I do, I do wanna take a moment to point out, everything you see there, this actually represented quite a lot of time invested by many members of our advisory boards. So this is a result of everyone working together and talking about the plan. It was not done, you know, on an island, just like me and Lou. It's, it had everyone engaged, and we really appreciate everyone's time. Mayor, Matt, everyone. It was a lot of work. Good work.
So the last initiative that relates to the focus of second focus, it would be enhanced promotion of existing events. So currently, the Chamber already have a calendar of events that have combined information from the city and also the Main Street. That's kind of like the, the starting point of where we select the tourism-related events we should promote and focus on. So we have events from January till December. And the next focus is like, how are we gonna look at a promotion perspective to recruit, get more visitors to come in to these events, and increase the awareness and influence of the destination of Casa Grande? Any questions regarding to that initiative? Okay, so then we're gonna shift our focus to the next area of focus that will be support local tourism product and asset development. And the most important initiative is probably just gonna be inventory and map Casa Grande's tourism products and assets. From this, I get a lot of help from the city, especially. I'm gonna big thanks to Ms. Richard Wilkie here, from the Economic Development Office. He gave me a bunch of lists that include our restaurants, venues, bars, and hotels. That's kind of like the major sectors of, in the tourism industry. And they are the, kind of the major stakeholders as far as relates to, you know, your sales tax and bed tax. And also, the website is waiting on this list for the map and inventory of the Casa Grande tourism products and assets. Chamber already has a good resource of the current member that can go into this category. Any questions relate to this initiative? Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the next initiative, which is invest in local tourism events and festivals. And the reason we believe this initiative is needed is for destination promotion, cultural preservation, and celebration. It's about community engagement, diversification of tourism offering, and collaboration and partnership. And this is really the events we offer that represent our community, our city. That gonna make us stand out from other destinations. You know, you have a lot of smaller destination in the valley that around Phoenix area, but we are not them. We are Casa Grande. We are this city that stand along in here, that's so different from other destinations. So some of the action steps that relate to that is we are working with some of the event planning company, trying to figure out what's the best events we should put on for Casa Grande that we can, first, we can generate some revenue, and we can also generate some attention, and eventually, we can attract some of the nearby residents or visitors from other destinations to Casa Grande. And that gonna have a effect, collateral effect, that they can also check out our restaurants, checking into our hotels, and, you know, just an economic boost through tourism, if that makes sense. So any questions relate to this initiative? All right.
Before you move on, I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
And I can ask it at the end, but it's regarding this.
No worries.
So I, I like the idea that you're gonna promote some of the existing events, because we have some fantastic events, the Street Bear, the Electric Light Parade. But excited to see that you're gonna look into other events that might be appealing, not only to our community, but other people. So do you have any idea, like, how many activities or events you're looking to bring? And, and who you'll, who you're gonna reach out to, to, to get some ideas?
Right, so just easy way to look at these two initiatives. So one, we're gonna keep doing the current events, that kind of tourism-focused. You know, we're gonna keep doing that. And two, the second part will be, we're gonna create some new events that gonna be tourism-focused, that, you know, can generate sales tax and, and bed tax to bring the, the, the economic to the city. Some of the partners we decide to work with is gonna be the city, Parks and Rec Department, Main Street, and also some other nonprofit within the city. We're still trying to do more research, figure out, you know, what's the best practice. There's a lot of things going on, and just for the current effort, what we have in mind is gonna have like a food festival that's, that's like a kind of generic festival, you can never go wrong with that. That gonna generate a lot of attention and attract all, everyone in the city to attend.
Yeah, I think, I think, too, this is a work in progress. So the, the commission, which I'm part of, and so is Matt, is just kind of putting those ideas together, right? So we met with, actually, Atessa this past week in the Podium Club, and he offered up the track for events, right? So, so there's a lot of things starting to pop.
Yeah.
You know, could we do bike racing up on CG Mountain? Sure, I mean, all those kinds of things. So they're all ideas that are in, he's kind of starting to put that, collect that information.
And it's wonderful. I think I just, I love this idea, and bringing, you know, events that celebrate our uniqueness. You know, whether it's culture, you know, we're, we're very rich in, you know, our Hispanic community, our Native American community, and, you know, so that, that's what I was kind of getting at, is I love that idea to maybe bring some of this.
And that's, that's part of the process, is trying to figure out what, what do we have special to offer? And from a, from a tourism standpoint.
Ma'am.
I was gonna, also, this is the really neat thing about when you have a group of people around the table. One of the members, Mindy, said, have you ever considered reaching out to production companies and inviting them to you to see what they might be looking to have? They might have an idea of an event to have, but maybe are we the right place to bring it to? You know, I, I know someone is like, maybe you should have a balloon festival. Like, our neighbors do a balloon festival, that'd be cheesy to do one of those. We wanna do something different and unique. And I think Lou's made a connection with a production company to start exploring those avenues on what can we do that becomes unique to Casa Grande?
So, thank you.
I want, I wanna add real quick, because I'm on the board, but I think part of your question was how, how many? I mean, we're at least gonna make the first couple of years, one big signature event, and maybe that's something we've had in the past, maybe not.
Right.
We've talked, I'm gonna speak out of class here, but we like talked about Odom-Tash, or Cowboy Days, or something like that, or something new.
More than like Serbia.
Yeah. You know, like the roping events, something that we already have, but we can make, make it better. You know, make it bigger. And then like, you know, like, sort of Fiesta stuff we have downtown, too. Working closely, but there will be at least one new signature event at some point, but we're really excited.
So I can give you something real quick. So one of the guiding principles that I was following is like, we should stick to what we have, you know, as far as what Casa Grande can offer. So that's where we're gonna start from. I mean, any other questions that relate to the strategic planning or the initiatives, action steps? Anything? Okay, I'm just gonna move on to some of the publications or advertisement we've been doing.
This was, this was really neat, because when we signed up for the grant last year with, by the way, Arizona Office of Tourism has typically had what they call their Rural Cooperative Marketing Program. The word rural is no longer part of it. Pima County DMOs can apply, Maricopa County cannot. But we, we, you know, we don't outgrow it, which is really neat. This particular project was, I kept on getting emails from them, and I said, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't order this one on the menu, because it's literally a menu. You go through and select all the items you've been interested in. This is sent out to people who plan sports events. We've got a mountain. You know, why not bring mountain biking to Casa Grande? But this was actually free to us. They wanted to include us in it, we had not been in it before, and we received a full-page spread in it, as well as another page, which is a full ad of men's, men's ball league, softball or baseball league. Photo is made possible by the City of Casa Grande PIO Office. This is the RV guide I mentioned. They don't give you so much of an ad as a page of content helping to tell your story. So this was a full page and worth every penny. This, again, goes out to all of, I can go back to my publicate, my list of publications here, but this goes to RV parks throughout the state, as well as visitor centers throughout the state. And I know when we've distributed things from the Chamber, we have a list of 65, as well as, I'll make sure places like Norris RV get them as well, to hand out to people there. And this is, we made a lot of our Neon Sign Park this year. It is unique to us. Thank you. There you go. This is the ad you'll see in the Phoenix, official Phoenix guide, as well as the Arizona Office of Tourism guide, and I'm so sorry. Can you all hear me now? I apologize.
Yeah, it's the
We have to take turns in front of the mic, my apologies. Anyway, this, because it's the Arizona Office of Tourism, you can see that they're co-branded. In the corner, you have the logo from AOT. But when we use the Neon Sign Park or anything that is a Main Street project, you'll also see that we either brand it, include the link to, the URL to the Neon Sign Park or to Main Street in our ads. But that's just such a pretty picture, it's a nice way to tell the Casa Grande story. We wanna show how diverse Casa Grande is, that it's not just the place that, I don't know, people think it is when I go, they call it Casagrande. I've had a person call me, tell me they called it Casabland, and I was just like, stop. It's Casa Grande. Anyway, this is Sunrise at Casa Grande Mountain. We have hiking, we have young people, we have seniors. We don't want it to just be pictures of people playing pickleball, although pickleball tournaments are going younger and younger. The next one. Speaking of young people, young people play golf, and they all get matching golf shoes. I happen to know this family, and they did this photo op just for us. And, but this has been out in the Drive Guide, as well as some others. And I like the fact that we're showing that young people enjoy playing and staying in Casa Grande. And then lastly, we're very fortunate, and this is one of two And then lastly, we're very fortunate, and this is one of two photos we've used that are from a local high school mountain biking club. And you'll see some more of that, because with the work that Lou is doing, there's gonna be a collection of photos developed that we'll be using on the website. But, you know, people need to know, if you like mountain biking, you can do it here. We have 17 miles of trails, developed trails. And then, you.
Sorry, everyone, I forgot to say that. But as far as the timeline tracking-wise for all the action plans, we're on track. We even ahead of the schedule on the DMO website about two weeks. So, original plan was launched in October, but the tech team from Blossom Digital, they were able to speed up for about like two weeks. So that gave us a little bit of buffer time to kind of focus on, focus on some other things. So this slide over here is kind of like a mock-up design for the billboards that we're gonna have. The timeline for these billboards is probably gonna run from October 7th to Au, sorry, August 7th to October 29th. So it's pretty much gonna be beginning of August to the end of October. And we're gonna have nine billboards. Five of the billboards gonna be digital billboards that in Phoenix, in the valley. And four of the digi, four of the boards will be vinyl boards. So, two of the vinyl boards will be around Tucson. And two of the boards will be kind of near Coolidge, and one is on I-10. You're gonna see it, because one of, one of these billboards, we are so lucky that we get a really good spot to catch other traffic. The estimate impression, so the concept of impression is just pretty much like how many people gonna see it and read it. It's gonna be around seven million for this duration. And I think it's, it's pretty good for the cost for the, for these billboards. It's really cost-effective. And this is just like one of the mock-up design that we come up with for one of the vinyl boards. So this one doesn't change. And if you want to go into a little bit more details of this, I believe these boards, they light up from, according to the Arizona State law, is probably from 6:00 AM till 10:00, 11:00 PM. So you got enough exposure from daytime to nighttime for all the flowing traffic. And for the digital billboards in the city, we decided to go with more designs, so they change every eight seconds. It's not like a motion, so, because according to the law, you cannot have anything moving on the billboards. You, it has to be static. So after eight seconds, it just changing to another advertised placement. For those, I, we decided to take a different strategy, because, you know, the traffic in the valley can quite be slow sometimes. So they got more time to read those. So it's like a little bit more information on the, on the digital billboards, you know, to kind of draw that attention to the valley. And also, Mayor has some great ideas, like eventually, you know, the city may have something to do for employment purpose with, also, in working partner with Economic Development Office to draw more employment in, into Casa Grande. Any questions regarding to the billboard?
Just where are those tacos? Like which, where are those from? You don't want to say, right?
Yes, so, since you mentioned that, I guess we, I'm, I'm just gonna move forward to the next thing we are doing. So we were fortunate enough to, enough to get a grant from AOT, Arizona Office Tour, Tourism Office. They would, we were able to launch this new program called Taco Trails. So if you ever did some wine trails, or brewery trails, or, you know, bourbon trails in other destination, it's similar concept. You have this digital pass on your phone that you can check into different restaurant in Casa Grande. And depends how many restaurant you've been accomplished, you can get rewards based on that. So it's just a thing to give to the visitors, you know, to have spending money at our local restaurant, and keep that money stay in Casa Grande.
And also get them to experience Casa Grande.
Mm-hmm.
You said it's so different.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No worries.
Talk about it.
Taco it.
Talk about it.
Talk about it.
And so, any questions regarding to that, to the Taco Trails? Okay, I'm gonna move on. Sorry, it's not really on, on the slides. This is still kind of in the very early stage of this plan. But what I have proposed to the Mayor and Larry regarding about industrial tourism, so that concept is about, it's kind of a type of tourism that focuses on visiting locations that link back to the local industries. So it can be very broad. Agri-tourism, it would fall under one of those. So it would be a tourism that focuses on specific industries. It's about education, production, and experience. So, it, this kind of tourism is really allow travelers to kind of learn new things while exploring. And it's emphasis on learning and providing insights into production process. And till now, I guess you probably kind of follow where I'm heading next, which is all the manufacturers and the fa, the factories that we have in Casa Grande. You know, based on the size, we are in Casa Grande. We have a lot of them here. And, you know, they are kind of the supporting industry that within Casa Grande. And the way I can come up with relate to tourism is, you know, we can have them open their doors to the public. It would be a good exposure to the local community, to the visitors, what we are offering in Casa Grande, and we are, what we are about in Casa Grande. And it's a growing industry. So, two years ago, in 2021, you're probably looking at $900 million industry. So in 2028, the growth rate is about 27%. It's gonna grow up to $1.2 billion. And as far as my knowledge goes, Mesa, Gilbert, Glendale, Tempe, Phoenix, you know, all those satellite cities within, in the valley, they are not really offering a lot of factory tours, and they don't have that kind of assets and ability to do that. But we can do that. It's just matter of fact, you know, how we get them engaged. And
Can I, can I add a little something?
Oh, sorry.
Like just some ideas we had? Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Lou led us in a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we were talking about, with the agric, agricultural tourism, maybe go, you know, from the farm where they grow the alfalfa, all the way to the dairy where it comes out the end product, and then from the dairy to the cream cheese, you know, we can do it all right here in Casa Grande, sour cream, cream cheese.
Yogurt.
Or like copper into batteries at Lucid. You know, we're mining the copper here all the way down, so.
And then out on the
Very early stages.
And then out in the racetrack to test drive the Lucid.
Yeah, and then out to the race, yeah. So we got a lot of early ideas, and he did a great job, and, and the board brainstormed a lot of stuff. So that's the kind of tourism we're talking about. And maybe some of the food manufacturers, and get the regulations, but something that we have, yeah.
We don't worry with chips, dip it. Daisy.
And maybe in the end, they can give away a bathtub, a car.
Yeah.
Some chips.
Get your Lucid.
Cha-ching.
Didn't you get a Lucid?
I got a little Lucid.
Come on, Mayor, we know you can talk them into it.
So, as far as some of the benefits from this kind of tourism, the major one's gonna be boost local econ, economics, and generate revenues. And for the factories, they're gonna have some onsite sales. It really depends, it, it can be like a B to C, like business to customer, or B to B, business to business sales. So if you're looking at that way, it can be at a macro level to a micro level. And also improve production. And there's also opportunities to increase exposure for employment. That's kind of just the byproduct from this experience. As far as my concerns, a really major destination that offers a lot of this experience are not really within United States. They are mostly located in Asia, Europe, and some part of South America. So, the industry starts to kind of slowly reacting to this emergence of this kind of tourism. But I think we get a head start of getting some initiative on this product development. Any questions regarding to the industrial tourism?
I like it.
Love it.
Love it.
Love it, live it, work it.
We've been very busy.
Yes, you have. I think it's awesome. So thank you. We're gonna meet tomorrow, right? So
Yeah.
Nine o'clock?
Yep.
I wanted to make a couple comments as the President of the Chamber of Commerce right now, or Chairman of the Board. Like Renee said when she accepted the position, was like, oh yeah, we're putting on this little tourism office. And she said, oh, yeah, I can handle that. And, you know, with COVID and everything, everything got pushed back, but she was constantly working, getting these grants with her, with her small staff at the Chamber, and they did a great job. And I want to publicly recognize Renee, and I did at the Chamber as well, but the Chamber is doing great as our Chamber of Commerce. And we're doing, doing a very great job of keeping that going. But she has been dedicating so much time to getting this tourism destination marketing, which calls the Tourism Board now, because it's so much better, to hiring someone. And we had some challenges, and we finally found Lou, and he's been a great asset. He moved across the United States from North Carolina and stopped all along the way to check out different tourism offices and brought back a lot of information. So I just want to say that, you know, Renee has done a great job leading the Chamber and the DMO organization during her tenure, especially this year as we ramped up. And Lou has jumped in with both feet and, and gotten, you know, we had this big meeting, I don't know, a couple weeks ago where we started this, all of a sudden, this idea with the industrial tourism
Brainstorm.
just really took a good brainstorm. And so he did a great job with that. So it's exciting. It's been a long time coming, if you guys remember, from the time we voted on this, and then COVID and tourism didn't happen for a couple years. And now here we are, and finally, we have this going, and we're promoting, not just tourism, but promoting our city, promoting our community to get people here, and even people that live here. You know, it's gonna be a great asset for that, people that don't do a lot of
Building our brand ambassadors is really important.
Yes. So anyway, I just want to recognize Renee
Thank you.
and Lou, and thank you guys for doing such a
I, I did want to say also, one of the things I appreciate, and I think, you know, a lot of things we do are by intention, you know, having the meetings and having as many members of the advisory board as possible participate means it's not our plan, it's our plan. And there's a lot of ownership in that. And, and we appreciate their time, and we know your time is valuable, believe me. And also, the support from the city to get this off the ground. But at the end of the day, you know, one of the things has always been like, this is not a separate, this is not a separate identity. It doesn't have its own tax ID. This is operated by the Chamber. We pay the bills separately electronically from the DMO account. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a department at the Chamber. We want to make sure that this runs as efficiently and effectively as the rest of our office does. And we also want to make sure everyone, every stakeholder feels they're getting value out of it. And at the end of the day, we want to see it success, and everyone being like, yay, go Casa Grande.
Just last round of questions. Anyone who have tourism-related questions, I can answer it right now. Just anything.
I have one, can I, can we have our publications back? We're putting them in our reader file.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
No, no question on the tourism.
Yeah, go ahead.
But no, great job, and welcome.
Oh, thank you.
You know, it's nice to have you here, and it's nice to have, you know, some fresh eyes looking at this. And so, so, so thank you, and we're excited. And I think it was a great presentation, keeping us up to date. And it is exciting to see how far it's come. Mayor, I know this is something that you've worked on since the day you were mayor. And so it, I'm sure you're, you're very happy, as we all are, because I think the Council and the staff have supported this in the city. So it's exciting to see. But, you know, when you talk about building brands, but hopefully, this will build, you know, pride to, the community pride, and bring some excitement when you're driving in Phoenix and you see, you know, something with Cas Grande. Hopefully, the community will see that and, and get excited about the pride, you know, community pride. So, thank you. Look forward to seeing the, you know, everything that comes before us.
Yeah, I'm gonna say thank you to the Mayor. Mayor's been a really great support for me, and he gave me a lot of support and also inside knowledge. And just kind of remind me of, again, so another project we are working on is trying to bring in filming to Casa Grande. We had that history, you know, with John Wayne stayed in Francisco Grande over there doing his film. You know, we can restart that again, you know, now, maybe next year, with Hollywood's coming in and boosting our econ, economic.
As long as you bring George Clooney back. We liked it when he was here.
We'll work on that.
And Lou, just thanks for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you, Renee.
You've done an amazing amount of work in the first, really, 30, 40 days of your, of being here. So thank you.
Today is, is his sixth Monday.
All right. Good job. Thank you, guys.
Sixth week anniversary.
Good job.
And Lou, you're gonna experience your first dust storm in Casa Grande tonight, so.
All the folds are
We do have weather. That was the warning that you were hearing, all the buzzing. It's a dust storm.
I think he's looking forward to
Welcome to Arizona.
Here's your, your publications.
Thank you.
Welcome to Arizona. Don't drive in it, by the way.
All right.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay. All right, we'll stand adjourned until 7:00. We'll start the regular council meeting. Thank you, everyone.